Test one, two.
Welcome to the April 13th School Board Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to the April 13th, 2021 School Board Meeting. We are working from an 11-item agenda. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the last meeting on March 9, 2021.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from the March 9, 2021 meeting.
Thank you. There's a second. Is there any discussion? But all those in favor signify. And that's four to zero. So it passes. The second item on the agenda is to approve Amendment Three to our Food Services Management Agreement with Airmark.
Thank you, Mr. President. The recommendation is to approve the Food Service Management Agreement. Airmark has been a great partner with the school corporation for many years. We have served over 100,000 meals since last year, or since March of 2020, to our community and our students. Our cafeteria workers, Airmark Food Nutrition Director Elizabeth Schmidt and cafeteria supervisor Ryan Hahn are on that team, and I will tell you, they exceed all expectations. The adjusted fees are small and are presented over the life of the contract. So the recommendation is to approve this.
Is there a motion? Yes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Amendment Three to the Food Services Management Agreement with Airmark.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Luke, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none. If all those in favor of the approval of Amendment Three to the Food Services Management Agreement would signify. And that is also unanimous for zero. The third item on the agenda this evening is to approve a request for an extended field trip.
The recommendation is to approve the extended field trip requested for the Speedway High School soccer team. The coaching staff has included their proposal for your information. The detailed plan is very similar to the ones in the past. So the recommendation is to approve this extended field trip.
Is there a motion? Luke?
I move that we approve the request for the extended field trip for the boys soccer team.
Thank you.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion of the motion?
Yes. It is, in fact, like the others in the past that we've had no problem with. And so at one level, I have no problem with it. Of course, in 2021, things are quite different perhaps than in the past. And I think that this request assumes that we're pretty, you know, back to normal in July and sure hope that we are. But I did find it interesting that there's not any reference at all to COVID procedures, to, you know, what would happen if, I don't know. I don't know, right? I mean, I don't know. So I guess I would feel more comfortable if we approved the request with the explicit understanding that should things get crazy again, then, you know, in June, we might have to revisit this before it happens in July.
Can I add to that?
Mm-hmm.
Also, it's out of Marion County, so it's in the Anderson University, so where it's going for the overnight. And again, we've done this before, but under the circumstances, I think that would be very wise of us to make sure we monitor this. And if there's any changes, that we're informed 100% of what's going on.
When we say, you know, it says that there'll be a hearing to any school and athletic policies, I assume that, are we referring to this school year's policies, even though this is the summer as far as masks and things like that?
Yes. Or through the Marion County Health, or through, I'm sorry, just not just Marion County Health Department, but just the health departments wherever the kids would be, such as when we travel anywhere for any of our varsity sports, we travel outside of Marion County. We have to adhere to their local rules and regulations. So we will monitor that, and that's an excellent point.
Is there a way that you would suggest that we put that into this agreement or modification? Or should we approve with the understanding?
Yeah, I think that we, I feel comfortable approving it with the understanding that, you know, should there be, in fact, I'd maybe even like a, when is this?
July 1921, yes.
So, you know, it'd be nice if we perhaps had either, whether that's, you know, the coach come to the July meeting, or whether that's just, you know, get word to you to get to us at the July, whatever, again, whatever would be appropriate, that, hey, you know, in a week, when we go do this, here's what this current health status is.
Absolutely.
So I think that can just be an explicit understanding.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Excuse me. Then would all who are in favor please signify? That's unanimous for zero. The fourth item on the agenda is to present a preliminary report regarding the 2021 summer school programs.
We are excited to be able to offer some summer school programs this summer. And that is assuming, like we just discussed, that things continue to go in the right direction and we're able to do that. Things could change drastically and quickly. But the proposed plan is to offer a summer school program similar to what we've had in years past with one little caveat. And that is, we would offer a, an I-Read program for those students that didn't pass I-Read. And this is specifically targeted at grade level three reading, reading instruction. There's also some remediation at both the elementary and at the junior high school in language arts and math. And there is enrichment classes offered at the elementary school and band classes that are offered at the high school and credit classes that are offered at our, at our high school. It's a very robust program that we're offering this summer. And also, a agreement with the Parks Department to continue the swim program that happens here at the high school. The caveat is, is we would like to try to offer like a kickstart program to the start of the school year. This was, this actually was the teacher's idea, ideas. And that is to, two weeks before school started, to have a program in which we would offer kids to come to school and having a sort of a kickstart to the school year in language arts and math, get them used to the school building and to teachers. And all of these are dependent upon the I-DoE guidelines of having a 15 to one student to teacher ratio. So we'd be reimbursed for those. But that is our summer school plans at this point. We've spent a lot of time putting that together, but they know that could change if things change as far as COVID is concerned, COVID guidelines. Any questions?
John, I have a question. On number seven, where it says government, is that students who did not pass government during this school year? Or is that students getting government so they don't have to take it next school year?
That is, those are both. One of those is a credit recovery class. And one of those is a, if they want to take that in the summer to get ready, you know, not have to take it next year.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's a regular, those are, those are obviously regular classes. I mean, they're not, right?
We're talking about the...
Those high, those high school take ahead-of-time classes.
Yes. Yes.
Um, is, I assume?
All of those classes we're talking about with the high school classes are through Plato, a software-driven, self-driven course for our high school students. Now, they're monitored by teachers here at school, but it is a, it is a self-paced program for students that choose to do that.
And so I guess then, so my, my question then is a little bit towards, those are not weighted classes. You can't take a weighted Plato class in the summer.
That is correct.
So this is a, right? Okay.
That is correct.
And then, did we, I assume that we gave specific attention and thought to, I've been reading a lot about, a lot of the studies that have been done, a lot of the recommendations that are being made kind of nationwide about remediation due to learning loss this year because of online hybrid crazy things. I assume that is part of what we're doing here with this, making sure that we're up to speed when we start 2021.
That is correct. One of the things we, we were looking at and talking about was not your typical remediation, but trying to close that COVID gap, as they call it. And that was one of the ideas of the teachers with the kickstart is that it'd be a great time to get kids back into the, the idea of school and try to help with that. If you could close that gap in two weeks, the answer is, why didn't you do that during the school year? But if we get them in small groups and work with them, it's amazing what a teacher with a very small group of students can do in a short period of time.
Well, I think too, I mean, let's be reasonable. What extra period of two weeks do you have during the year? Because you're doing the stuff you're supposed to be doing in that segment to be doing, you know, catch up on top of that just seems crazy. Is this something that self-selected, teacher-selected, both?
As far as the teachers for this?
No. As far as the students?
As far as the students is the students are, they're recommended. I mean, we will send home letters and saying to, and teachers will actually contact parents and say, you know, we think it would be best if, if your son or daughter attends this, this opportunity. The enrichment classes, they usually get filled by kids that want to come to summer school and do certain things. But as far as the remedial classes, it's we send, we tap students on the shoulder and parents and say, you know, they could probably benefit if they did this. So the teachers that you see on that list, we hardly ever use all of those. We try to, we try to overplan so that we have enough budget for them. But realistically, we hardly ever use all that, the teachers that are listed there.
So along the same lines, it seems to me that there's a risk that, you know, this labeling of, oh, you've got to go to summer remediation is, you know, this kind of problem with, but yet it seems like this year that especially may not be the case. That there's children who are doing fine, but who, for a variety of COVID-related reasons, would benefit from, and I think that's important that people know that.
Laura, one of the things that were, that was mentioned as we were talking about summer school and planning is we never want to use the word "loss." We want that out of our vocabulary. It was just an opportunity to get better. So instead of starting with the negative, the saying that you've lost, you're behind, you're doing this, here's just an opportunity to make yourself better. And we do that in athletics all the time with summer camps. We do that in, you know, we do it with band and, and summer camps. Why not do it in education? Here's an opportunity to improve. So I thought that was a great idea to use, to take the word "loss," we're trying to close gaps, we're trying to, it's just an opportunity to get better. And maybe that, that approach is more positive to people wanting to come learn.
I'm wondering if we will pay particular attention to students entering in first grade who've never had a kindergarten experience, a classroom kindergarten experience especially, to try to give them a kickstart, so to speak, on, on being a student. Is that something also that we're going to try to find or look at?
One of the things, you, you nailed it, is one of the things we talked about was if we have students that were in e-learning and that hadn't been in the classroom, especially, especially those primary grades, what a great opportunity for, to get, see what a classroom is like with a smaller group of kids. So yes, definitely going to target those, especially the primary, primary students.
And then I think included in this is also support for the swim program?
That is correct. That was correct last night at the town council meeting. Dr. Trevally mentioned that money was going to be given to the Parks Department and by the schools to help with their programs. And part of that is, it will help with the swim program here. And it's longstanding tradition of helping with the swim program here in our community during the summer program.
As a, as a swimmer learner and also as one of the instructors while I was in high school. I participated in that program and I'm glad that we have it. It's a good community safety issue as well, so.
Yes.
Offering. Is there other discussion or commentary? Hearing and seeing none, then...
Not an action item. Pardon? It's not an action item, I don't think. Is it?
Nope, because it's just a preliminary report. So we don't, we don't act on it until they've spent the money.
We'll bring this back once we have the exact numbers and whatnot.
Right, when you spend the money.
And we'll get reimbursed from this, from the state also, typically $27,000 to $34,000 from whatever we spend. But it's all driven by enrollment.
Sure.
And this is the kicker. Times changed a lot. But just the question about government is, when I was the principal, it allows kids to have flexibility if they need to go to Area 31. So this is, this has so many benefits that we allow opportunities for kids in the high school to get their credits, especially because, you know, 19 AP classes, we do have kids that want to maximize on certain areas of AP classes. So at small school, small ball, you have to make sure you work the schedule. This allows all of that.
Okay. Our fifth agenda item this evening is to approve funding for a recreation program administered by the Speedway Parks and Recreation Department.
After being here for eight years, this is the one, one piece that it's a routine, yet very proud of. And the recommendation is to, again, reimburse the town of Speedway up to $15,000 in support of summer recreational programs and swim lessons specifically designed to serve the children of our school community. And Tammy Smith has been, has taken this program leaps and bounds. And I just want to let her know that we appreciate her, her heart and souls in everything that she does. And if you don't know that, just go talk to her about this. So we match on that side. Give kids opportunities, and you'll see from the kickball to the swim lessons, we have a good group. And Chuck Bennett leads that from the high school standpoint, from those high school instructors that come down and assist. So what a great program we do. Another example of the partnership we have with, with our town.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve funding for a recreation program administered by our Parks and Recreation Department here in town.
I'll sign up.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this issue? Okay. If those who are in favor would signify. And that passes unanimously for nothing. The sixth item on the agenda is to approve the textbook adoption for social studies.
Every year, we adopt a, a different subject matter textbook. They're on a six-year cycle. It used to be from the Indiana Department of Education that they were required to do that. Now it's just recommended. This year is the year for social studies. And we have started that process, as you can see in your packet, back in, actually in August, when we named who are the committee chairman for those committees. The state board then establishes what books can be approved and used. And then the committee meets. They start looking through textbook materials, matches those up to Indiana state standards. And then they, they get a committee that looks over those textbooks. Those textbooks are then, there's a rubric that is used to, to judge those books, how much of the state standards are matched by each textbook that's used. And that recommendation is then brought to, to you guys to be approved. The social studies textbooks this year, it was, the committees were, it was a, it was very much a, a pointed effort to try to make sure that we had a diverse population in those textbook committees. That we, we went out and got parents and teachers involved in the selection of those textbooks. And the textbooks that are being recommended are in your packet. And they are with the, with the elementary level, Sabbath learning, which used to be Pearson. And in the sixth, or seventh and eighth grade, it's TCI, which is very much a cutting-edge type of one-line, type of, type of curriculum and, and resource. And then Cengage, which is AP and pre-AP, and McGraw-Hill for grade level at the ninth through 12th grade.
Thank you. Is there, are there any questions or is there any discussion on the issue?
I just appreciate including all the different groups to get some feedback on this. That there's a, both buy-in and a better understanding to make a real good decision. So thank you for that.
I think, you know, one of the concerns that I've had with social studies, and this is, so basically, this is our history textbook adoption, is that we are paying particular attention to some of the issues that we've been dealing with over the last year with regard to racism. And I just would like to, I guess, inform my fellow board members that I talked at length with the superintendent, assistant superintendent earlier this week about that, that, you know, I think it's clear that when you're adopting the newest textbooks, but they were written previous to the last 12 months, that, you know, that there's going to need to be some supplementation perhaps that, and we've talked, we have talked about, you know, what that looks like and how, some things that we can be doing with our staff with, you know, in, in that regard. And so those are conversations that I think were really important to have, that have, that are, that have been had, that are continuing to be ongoing. And I, and I just, I feel pretty comfortable that, you know, our people in charge are on top of that.
Anything further on the issue?
I, the joy of education is that you just can't put it in a box. You have to continue to look at what the future may be. And with, after having a long discussion about this and the social studies and, and social justice, all the issues that we've gone through and are still going through, and it's not just going to be an end conversation. There's one piece of this that I'd like to add, that we are going to continue to work on. We have a textbook adoption team. And in the past, on just how we do things, we, we look at it. We spent a year on, every year on a process. It gets ramped up in January, February, March, once we bring it to you guys and to all boards across the state in, in April and May. But it's an ongoing process. The one thing is, is what, after we do this, what do we do next? What's next year's?
Math.
Math. And we usually just say, okay, now we're done with this, let's move to math. And that's just how we've always done it. We have 20 years and multiple years. That's just what we do. This is one, this is a time that we need to slow down, reflect on this. And I'm going to ask our administrative team to have a review team to come back to this. I think that's very, very important to understand that although these books are written a year ago or two years ago because they want to make their money, they're textbooks, how I remember them. But it's really supplemental information that we get an online version that's always up to speed. A textbook has print in it, and our online subscriptions across the board has information that's updated immediately. And this is a subject area across the board, K through 12, that I'm going to, like I said, challenge our administrative team. Not just challenge, we're going to have something in place that we can bring it back to our board meeting to give an update where we're at on things. Because just the textbook, the information, now we're talking about teacher delivery, we're talking about the instructional methods that we're using. And I think that would be good for the board and the community here, the directions that we're trying to go, to make sure we bring everything out on the table transparent as possible. So there, there's no action on that. I just let you know that we're going to do some, what we call best practice, in my opinion, would be to go back and review this and bring some type of report back. Take a look at six months, take a look at nine, and then come back on this, I guess with your permission. But that, I would say that would, that would be a nice best practice under these circumstances.
I may add that the textbook is, and I think, yes, we talked about that, I think it's a great idea. But textbooks are really just a, a resource to teach Indiana standards. And there's no textbook that's going to do every standard the way you need to be taught because textbook, as we, textbooks, as we know, are usually developed out in California and Texas, and they make their way across the United States, and they sometimes don't have all of our standards in it. Any teacher that teaches any subject will add supplementary material to their, to their daily instruction or at least their yearly instruction. We have a social studies teacher in the room with us that I guarantee you that he added supplementary material to his, to his instruction each year and current events or whatever's going on in the world as, as today. And I think this year, Laura brought it to our table, I think it's a perfect thing we should be talking about. I think this year, more importantly, in the, in the future, we got to make sure that those things are being talked about in our classrooms and led by, you know, our teachers in the right way. So I applaud it and think it's the right direction we need to be going in. The trouble is, is there's not a textbook today that's on the market that addresses all those issues. Nor will there be one, two years from now that addresses all those issues, or three years, because who knows what, what the future will bring. But keep in mind, we will stay on top of that and make sure that's taking place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further discussion or commentary? Hearing and seeing none. Do we have a motion?
I'm not even sure we have a motion.
Oh, well.
I think we started talking after John talked.
Luke?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the textbook adoption.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. Thank you both. Now, is there any further discussion or commentary? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those who are in favor of the adoption please signify? And that passes unanimously as well. The seventh item on the agenda this evening is to approve the 2020, 2021, actually, it should be the 2021, 2022, Student Parent Handbook.
That is correct, 2021, 2022.
We just have it wrong on the agenda.
We brought it to your, to the March Board Meeting.
Yes.
Had an opportunity to look over that, and there really are no substantial changes in the handbook, as we mentioned back in March. There's dates and calendar things that need to take place. And obviously, some personnel changes that need to take place in that. But as we are ready to move forward with that, understanding that there's still general session, there could be some updates that need to be made, legal updates that need to be made. So I would recommend that we approve the, the handbook with the idea that there's, could be some changes that are made legally through the General Assembly and the Indiana Code.
Board?
I would, I move that we would approve the handbook, the 2021, 2022 Student Parent Handbook, with the understanding that there may be additional changes required. I guess I would also add the caveat that to the extent that those would seem to be of any substance whatsoever, then we would have it come back to the board. But kind of routine matters can be made without coming back to the board. That's my motion. Kind of long, but...
I'll, I'll second it.
What she said? Any discussion? Okay. Would all board members who are in favor of adopting it as proposed in the motion? And that passes for, to nothing. The eighth item is to acknowledge the grants that have been received by the school corporation, which in this last month totaled $211,361. which in this last month totaled two hundred eleven thousand, three hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. The ninth item on the agenda is the personnel report.
We have a lengthy personnel report. This month, we'll start with resignations. We have the following resignations that have, that have been presented. Katie Payden is a teacher at Wheeler Elementary School, who resignation will be effective at the end of the school year, June thirtieth. Megan Johnson, teacher at Allison Elementary School. Again, her resignation will be effective at June thirtieth. Catherine Stroke, who is high school cheerleading sponsor. Shelby Sesnick, who is assistant high school cheerleading sponsor. Katie Payden is also resigning her position as assistant high school girls' basketball coach. Mark Parker is resigning his position as assistant high school girls' basketball coach, and Michael Scheck, who is resigning his position as seventh grade girls' basketball coach. On the employment side, I'd recommend that we employ Trevor Long. Trevor Long will be filling the posted position of junior high science teacher. Marvin Montgomery is a high school assistant baseball coach. Shane Clampett is a high school assistant track coach, and he's going to split that stipend with Erica Huntman as a high school assistant track coach. Jennifer Jennings is a high school assistant girls' basketball coach. Katherine Randolph is a choreographer of our play, and Janet McIntyre is a cafeteria for our employee. There's also one additional recommendation, and that is to recommend a volunteer coach that's going to work with our varsity high school baseball team, and that is Stephen Bishop. Any questions with the personnel report for April?
Not a question, but a comment. While we're sad to see people leave, it just struck me, looking down this list and looking at the reasons why they're leaving, they're all for family reasons, or husband's taken a job somewhere else, or going back to school and get more education, they're all for the right reasons that, that people are choosing, not unhappiness, but a change of direction in family life that, that results in them, and that part of it is, is worth noting, I think.
Great point, Mr. Smith, and that is that two of our teachers that are, three of our teachers that have resigned so far this year, two of them is because their spouse has been transferred out of state at the end of the school year, the other one is due to a maternity leave situation, wants to stay home and raise her child, so, you're right, all those are not because they're better opportunities because of family situations, which we're very proud of.
Mr. Smith, I'll also note that, as I look through these, while, while I'm not originally from Speedway, I often see names, and you're reading through these things, and you see a long history, and I, I think it, it speaks well of the district and the experience our students have, that so many of them want to come back and volunteer their time to work with us, whether it's in volunteer coaches, or with, with band, or choir, or choreography, or whatever it may be, over the years, we see that over and over, and I think that really speaks well to how they feel after they've left our, our schools.
Is there a motion from the board concerning the personnel report?
I'll move that we accept the personnel report as presented.
Thank you. A second has been received. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, if all board members who are in favor of the personnel report as submitted, signify. Thank you all, that passes for nothing. The tenth item on the agenda is to recognize visitors and/or other business. Having no visitors, the question for the administration is, is there other business?
I'd like to just make it out public that this, the twentieth of April will be a kindergarten roundup, so if there's people in the community that's listening to this, that have a kindergarten-age student, that from five-thirty that evening, at each one of our four elementary schools, will hope, host a kindergarten roundup, and the purpose of that is to come in to see how, what it means to enroll a student into Speedway schools as a kindergartner. And to enroll a student in the, as a kindergarten, they must be five years of age before August first of this school year, this coming school year, there is an early entrance opportunity, and that is if you are turned five before October first, you can go through a early entrance process, but it involves going through an assessment, make sure that they're, they're ready for school. So, April twentieth, kindergarten roundup.
Thank you. Any other business? All right, then we will adjourn to approve claims.